Good evening. I want to welcome you and call an order the meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, June 2nd, 2025 at 6:30. Let the record show there is a quorum of board members present. Myself, Stephen Shodrock, Mr. Craig Mutes, Ms. Liana Martinez, Ms. Jason Saboda, Ms. Bana Reed, and Dr. Jill Holden. First, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Mr. Saboda will now lay this in prayer, followed by Ms. Martinez leading the class.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day and for the end of a great school year. I want to thank you for this beautiful weather and recent rains that you have bestowed upon us. Be with our students and staff along with their families to keep them safe and enjoy their summer vacations. I ask you to be with us this evening to help guide us, make the best decisions for our students and schools. The Lord be with us tonight to keep us safe on our journeys home. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one nation, one indivisible.
Dr. Holden will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, and competence. Our mission statement is, FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Ms. Reed will now recite our FISD goals, please.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service, and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of the board recital of the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in IFSD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, ethical individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central office lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
I will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics. Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month for code of ethics, we are highlighting student-centered focus. I will be continually guided by what is best for all students of the district. Our good governance indicator for the month is, the board and superintendent team regularly checks expectations and assesses board superintendent-manager operations. Next is the future chef participants. Ms. Buck, I will pass it over to you.
Thank you.
It's literally passing the buck.
Can I please have the future chef participants?
What should I get here?
Right there, you can take the line up right across there.
Okay.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the board for recognizing the amazing jobs these future chefs did at the competition this year. I'd also like to thank our panel of judges that participated in the competition, including two guest student judges, Ms. Mia Franco and Elizabeth Medina, this year, in addition to having the high school culinary department as sous chefs for all of our future chefs. Judging someone's cooking is not an easy task, especially when our participants did such a great job. I wanted to let you guys know, it was so hard and you know how long it took to tally all of the votes. It was a very, very close race, one point in between first and second place, and the rest within 15 points after that.
Good. Very good.
So this is your certificate of recognition for participating. Ms. Jenna Breisch. Ms. Sky Lopez. Ms. Zelda Pineda. Jenna Breisch was our overall winner with a very close second. She did a wonderful meatloaf, simple, plain. It was great, with a close second for Robbie LaFrance. That was the one-point difference. And I also have folders with everyone's recipes. I have 10 of them, so if you would like a copy, right here. Is there anything you would like to say? No? No?
Ladies?
I'll take one.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I already had, I handed some out on the night.
Oh, we get it. Yes, we need one.
Yes, I've tried the majority of them out, they did so well.
I love meatloaf sauce.
Do you need to put guano sauce?
Guano.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So it was Ms. Reagan Wallston did her amigable sliders. Ruby Segovia had a tostadas a la Ruby. Sky Lopez did the easy-peasy chicken fredo. And Ms. Zelda did the chicken quesadilla. And Madison Rios did the super sloppy joe sliders with rainbow slaw. That was a mouthful. Yes. Thank you so much. You guys are great.
I want to visit with you about food. Listen, Sky, Zelda, and Ruby, and Reagan, we're so proud of you and proud of all the girls. My question is, you gave us recipes, do you come with a recipe to the house? You don't do that. Oh, man, I was hoping I didn't have to cook. But listen, thank you so much, delicious recipes, and congratulations, future chefs of America. Listen, I eat a lot, I look forward to seeing you all in the restaurant one day, cookie for me.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Come on up, Ms. Buck, you as well. There we go. Make sure you get your tits get turned right. There you go, start it upside down.
Can we stop her, hold on, hold on, you got parents got to take.
All right, congratulations. Thank you very much. They're shaking their hand too.
Thank you very much, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We want to have our Mighty Tiger Band State Solo Contest, Mr. Caffey.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shodrock, members of the board, Dr. Gilstrap. As you said, these young gentlemen participated in the state solo and ensemble contest last Saturday. Just a quick explanation of what that is. There is a qualification to get there. When I was in high school, you just went to solo contest, you played your solo, if you got a one, you automatically advanced. And then it kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger, so they made it harder and harder and harder. First of all, you have to play a first of a Class One solo, which is the hardest one on the list. You have to play it by memory, and you also have to get the First Division before you can qualify to the state contest. Let's see, I should introduce my fellows. This is Ryan Holcomb, and that is Thomas Delmonte and Rafael Maldonado. I also need to mention, first of all, they are all percussionists, so this advancement of theirs had nothing whatever to do with me, but just with Mr. McArdle. Mr. McArdle is in Vegas right now, so depending on how things go there, we may or may not see him again. But very proud of these guys and the work they have done. Actually, I do want to mention one more thing. This is kind of a weird story. We had a student named Brad Valentine, who was in the band until February, I think, early March, and he transferred to Midland. And Mr. Beaver's mother-in-law is an accompanist, and she, they were picking her up at Midland High School, where they were dropping off the state kids. And Brad also made a one on his solo, at the state solo and ensemble contest, so again, Mr. McArdle. We also have another student, Arledy Jones, who is not here, he's also on vacation. Nathaniel got a three at state, which is a good rating. The first time I went, I got a four, so he's already way ahead of me. And Thomas and Ryan received First Division Superior.
Awesome. Awesome.
Mr. Caffey, you always seem to impress us, and it's like you never let us down with the people you surround yourself with, and then, of course, the students of the shows with y'all, so I can't say congratulations enough, because to get to state is just out of our minds, and for y'all to be there and do so well and represent Florisville, we appreciate that as a board, but as a community, it's awesome seeing y'all on Friday nights out there and getting after it. And I know with the percussions, I know y'all get after it pretty well, so congratulations to y'all, it's an awesome job. Thank y'all.
Thank you for representing.
All right, congratulations.
They're shaking their hands. Congratulations. All the nations. Congratulations. All the nations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Proud of you. 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 Proud of you.
Next, we will move to the Boys and Girls Academic Allstate for softball and baseball.
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board, these, Mr. Shodrock and Dr. Gilstrap, appreciate you having us today. Today, I'm happy, first of all, I just want to clarify on the baseball one, that's on my fault, we accidentally sent the academic all district instead of the all-state kids. But I am happy to recognize one of our softball players today, Academic Allstate, not only does she excel on the field, but in the classroom and in the community, she's a great role model for a lot of kids and represents our program first class. I'm going to turn it over to our softball coach, Coach Trevino.
Hi, thank you. Again, it's an honor to be here, thank you so much. Just a little bit about Macy Tally, I've known her since she was like this big, so seeing her achieve such good things so early on in her life is amazing to watch. As far as softball goes, a little bit about that, she was a leader as soon as the season started, probably even in the offseason. I came to the season a little bit late because I was in basketball, but my first practice out there, it was clear that she was a leader, she was taking control, she was always supporting her teammates, giving constructive criticism when needed, but always celebrating their little victories, so that was super great. And again, her leadership was just a constant throughout her season. We had a lot of new faces on the team and a lot of new starters, so she was the backbone, and she was why we had the success that we had. And Academic Allstate, I mean, there's nothing more to say about that. She's going to Texas A&amp;M, and she has dreams to be a vet, and there's no doubt in my mind that I know that she'll be able to do that. So again, Macy Tally, she got Academic Allstate.
Macy, congratulations. I mean, you represent yourself, dedication, hard work, with everything you're struggling with peanut and stock shows, and still maintaining grades, and being, representing your family and the school, we appreciate you a lot, and best of luck to you at A&amp;M.
Thank you.
One over, Ms.
One, two, one, 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 two.
Most important.
Thank you.
Last, we will have our state qualifier for tennis, Coach Trevino.
Yes, sir. I'm also honored today to recognize Lily and what she was able to accomplish this year in our tennis program. I'm not sure that anybody works harder than she does, if you'll ever go up to the courts, early mornings or late nights, she's probably on it. Summertime, in the heat of the summer, she's out there as well, so somebody who's truly dedicated to the sport, really proud of her and what she was able to accomplish for our program. Coach Leonard's here today to present her.
Let me tell you something about Lily. I know we're here to celebrate her state, or competing at state in tennis, but I want to tell you something that actually defined how great of a young lady she's going to be. Tennis showed it. I think it was the regional tournament, she was, she lost the first set zero-six. She was losing the second set two to five, down 15-40, and I think her opponent was serving. And obviously, she breaks that serve. She goes on and wins that game, wins the set, and goes on and wins the third set. That type of grind, that type of, I refuse to lose, is what's going to carry her in life. So regardless, and I know you were upset at state, I get that, but you are a sophomore with that type of grind, you're way further than a state championship already. So I wanted, I wanted the community to know exactly what type of, of, of students, what type of family we have here. Mr. and Ms. Marsanowski, please continue to throw gas on this fire. Continue to do, continue to do that. Lily, continue to keep your grind. And you know, we just talked about tennis, she's also in the top 10 of her class. Not top 10%, the top 10. So she's getting it done in all areas. Lily Marsanowski is going to be a name that everybody knows from Florisville at some point. I don't know what, but she is going to be a pillar of Florisville, so congratulations, Lily.
Lily, to have your coach speak so highly of you, that reflects your hard work, your dedication, the outstanding skill that you have on the court, and that you have all of this, and you're putting forth all this as a sophomore, we're really excited to see what you do each year after that. Thank you, and we're very proud of you.
Congratulations, Joe.
Yes, that's better. One, two, one, one. Thank you.
Ms. Peachtree, do we have any to public, to comments? Okay. One here. The board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with the board procedures may do so at this time. The board asks that these participants' comments be limited to items on the agenda pertaining to district business or no longer than two minutes. Remember the board, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are, that are not posted on the, on the agenda. In addition, the board's adopted policies provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Copies of our district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available at www.fisd.us. At this time, Ms. Robin McNeil, you'll have two minutes. And Ms. Peachtree, if you help me track the time, thank you.
Hi, good evening. As Mr. Shodrock mentioned, my name is Robin Anne McNeil, actually, for the record. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent and also a member of this community of Florisville. In the wake of the failed 2025 school bond, many of us not, are not just disappointed, we're concerned how the district presented the $95 million for the voters to basically not approve. The bond's rejection wasn't just about dollars, it reflected a deeper issue, a loss of trust in our district leadership. The community spoke clearly, we want affordable bond. We want safety, we want security for our students, for our children. We want it to be transparent, and we want a well-communicated plan, which y'all did not provide, and you did not listen to the people from our community who said, this was not going to pass. You did not, and it did not. My question to you now, what are the next steps? What is your plan for safety and security that your community, your taxpayers, will But this becomes a more concerning, deeper issue after May 15th's active shooter lockdowns. While we commend the shift response of our law enforcement and our staff, this incident left a huge lasting scar on not just parents, but your students. Y'all have no idea what it was like to be a parent if you are not one of, one of those kids that was sending text messages. It shook our sense of safety and raised serious concerns about preparedness and communication. Our children were not just passive participants, they were active witnesses. I'll be done in a moment. Many of those students listened to the police scanners, they shared updates in group chats and posted on social media. Were you aware they were listening to scanners that day? They were. Parents received frantic, frightened messages, some from their children, others from fellow parents. Students were barricaded in bathrooms, closets, and under desks, including my child, unsure if they were truly safe. I was one of the hundreds of parents that picked up my child that day to hug and hold him close, and did not let him go to school the next. This disconnect fueled confusion and mistrust due to the different official updates we got from y'all and what we were getting from our children. And in the aftermath, that misinformation spread rapidly, often by your students, our children, yet we've heard little about how the district plans to address digital responsibility, rumor control, or student accountability during emergencies. It's on them too, and the parents. So I ask, what is the district's plan to rebuild trust and bring forth a bond package our community can support? Safety and security, two words. How will the district ensure timely, accurate communication in future incidents? And what is the plan to educate students on responsible digital behavior, so this doesn't happen again with rumors and social media? Trust isn't rebuilt through silence, it's rebuilt through honest reflection, humility after failure, clear communication, and concrete actions. We're not here to assign blame, we're here to demand a better path forward for the safety and the well-being of our children. Please, get a plan. I, as your, a member of your community, my child is a member of your school district, I want to get behind something, provide a plan that I can get behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Peachtree. We will now continue with our reports and updates with the superintendent report by Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, board members, included in the packet of superintendent's report, we first of all want to say congratulations to the Florisville High School class of 2025. Our graduates last week, or two weeks ago, had an opportunity to celebrate for 307, is that correct, Mr. Caffey? 307 graduates that day, their families, our community, really had a great opportunity to come together and celebrate the first of many milestones, no doubt that these students will accomplish. We want to wish them the best of luck moving forward in their future endeavors, wherever life may take them to the four corners of the world, we're very proud of them. Included in the meeting packet, also at your desk, is a list of students and staff recognitions that we've done throughout the school year this year. We've had over 180 students that have come across and staff members to celebrate them reaching the highest levels of state competitions, and also our recognitions every month. That does not include, obviously, the entire band, we only had a number of those band students come in, but congratulations to all of them on a great year, and there's some great things going on around Florisville ISD, and once again, we're very proud of them. The legislative session has come to an end today, they did finish up and wrap up, there are several bills, several bills that are left pending on the governor's desk. Just remember, that because a bill passes the House and the Senate, does not mean it becomes law, it still has to be signed by the governor, or there is a timeline for, for him to veto, and if he doesn't veto, then it becomes law. There are many pieces of legislation that we have to work through as educators and different organizations, and we want to make sure that we interpret those correctly. Some of these will directly affect FISD and how we move forward, particularly when it comes to funding. Also, our handbooks, our student code of conduct. Be expecting in the coming months, as usual, after legislative session, the TASB policy updates will be coming out to interpret and implement any new laws that are coming out. A few bills of interest, House Bill 2 would provide some much-needed funding for public education. The current bill that is sitting on the governor's desk would provide 8.5 billion in new funding for schools across the state of Texas, with a substantial investment in teacher pay raises and teacher compensation. We have not received any local runs, and so we are, it's really hindering our ability to build our budget, but we are expecting that, obviously, with the governor has not signed it yet, so hopefully, once he signs it, we'll be able to get more information about some details to how we need to implement the new plan for, for that. House Bill 2, which was regarding the substantial changes to assessment accountability, that did not pass, they had a conference committee, so that bill did not go to the governor's desk, so there will not be a change in the state's assessment accountability process. House Bill 1481, which would ban students from using cell phones anytime during the school day, that did pass both houses, and will go to the governor's desk awaiting his, his signature. House Bill 5606 would allow districts to establish a sick leave pool, which teachers, any employee that has days left over, can donate those to this sick pool whenever they retire. And so it's really a great opportunity, we already have one locally, but this would be something at the state level, so we look forward to getting some more information about that, implementing something like that.
307 graduates that day, their families, our community, really had a great opportunity to come together and celebrate the first of many milestones, no doubt that these students will accomplish. We want to wish them the best of luck moving forward in their future endeavors, wherever life may take them to the four corners of the world, we're very proud of them. Included in the meeting packet, also at your desk, is a list of students and staff recognitions that we've done throughout the school year this year. We've had over 180 students that have come across and staff members to celebrate them reaching the highest levels of state competitions and also our recognitions every month. That does not include, obviously, the entire band. We only had a number of those band students come in, but congratulations to all of them on a great year, and there are some great things going on around Florisville ISD, and once again, we're very proud of them. The legislative session has come to an end today. They did finish up and wrap up. There are several bills that are left pending on the Governor's desk. Just remember that because a bill passes the House and the Senate, it does not mean it becomes law, it still has to be signed by the Governor, or there is a timeline for him to veto, and if he doesn't veto, then it becomes law. There are many pieces of legislation that we have to work through as educators and different organizations, and we want to make sure that we interpret those correctly. Some of these will directly affect FISD and how we move forward, particularly when it comes to funding, also our handbooks, our student-coded condo. Be expecting in the coming months, as usual, after legislative session, the TASB policy updates will be coming out to interpret and implement any new laws that are coming out. A few bills of interest, House Bill 2 would provide some much-needed funding for public education. The current bill that is sitting on the Governor's desk would provide $8.5 billion in new funding for schools across the state of Texas with a substantial investment in teacher pay raises and teacher compensation. We have not received any local runs, and so it's really hindering our ability to build our budget, but we are expecting that, obviously, with the Governor has not signed it yet, so hopefully, once he signs it, we'll be able to get more information about some details to how we need to implement the new plan for that. House Bill 2, which was regarding the substantial changes to assessment accountability, that did not pass. They had a conference committee, so that bill did not go to the Governor's desk, so there will not be a change in the state's assessment accountability process. House Bill 1481, which would ban students from using cell phones anytime during the school day, that did pass both Houses, and will go to the Governor's desk awaiting his signature. House Bill 5606 would allow districts to establish a sick leave pool, which teachers, any employee that has days left over can donate those to this sick pool whenever they retire. And so it's really a great opportunity, we already have one locally, but this would be something at the state level, so we look forward to getting some more information about that, implementing something like that. SB 10 would require the 10 commanders to be posted in all classrooms in public schools. Finally, SB 27, also known as the Teachers' Bill of Rights, will substantially change student discipline and teacher protections in the classroom. So several other bills, it's hundreds of them that directly affect public education, but those are just a few of the highlights that we look forward to the Governor signing. We were expecting TASB Update 125, Policy Update 125, we still did not get that, so we are going to cancel the policy committee meeting that's scheduled for next Monday, so do not worry about that, we will push that on into after the summer, we can go through Policy Update 125. At the next board meeting, we will be looking at local policy FNCE, which is regarding the telecommunication devices, so we will still have that on the agenda. We'll have a budget workshop on Monday, June 9th, at 6:00 PM. This will be an opportunity for the full Board to review the proposed 2526 budget. Again, we're crossing our fingers, this angle is waiting on those numbers to be released so we can finalize that budget. We're also scheduling a special meeting on Wednesday, June 25th, at 6:30. The agenda for the special meeting will include the regular items, our final budget amendment for the year, and as well as a proposed budget for approval by the Board. We will not have a July board meeting, so there will not be a regular July board meeting, that one will take its place. TASB SLI is scheduled for June 12th through the 13th. This is a great opportunity for Board members to receive their required continuing education hours. We do have 100% of our Board that has signed up, so thank you for making arrangements in your schedule to attend that together. It will be held in San Antonio, we will leave here at Central Office at 6:00 AM each morning. We'll stop by the Oak Hills Community Church around 6:15, so if you want to park out there on the way to San Antonio, we can pick you up there, and then we will have a group dinner on Thursday evening. Policy DC Local allows the superintendent the authority to provide contracts to those employees that we're offering contracts to. Once again, in order to be competitive in the market, we need to be able to offer those contracts in a timely manner, so we have included, it's no need for Board action, but we've included the list of contracts that have been sent out since the last board meeting. Also included in your packet is a list of current open positions, contract positions that we have available in the district. The weekly update for attendance and enrollment is provided in the Board Brief every week, however, below is the enrollment and ADA information for year-to-date. So at the end of the year, we had 4,002 students enrolled. On the last day of school, our overall attendance year-to-date was 93.05%, and we've got some charts there to show compared to the previous years. There are two important dates to remember in July, while we will not have a regular meeting, we will have our team building for our administrators and our Board members on Wednesday, July 23rd. We'll be attending the Missions baseball game. Also, just for your information, you're welcome to attend our new teacher orientation, which will be on Monday, July 28th, at 8 o'clock in the morning at the middle school. So mark that down in your calendar, Board members, if you're able to attend, we encourage you to do so.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. We will now have a special programs report by Dr. White.
Good evening, President Shadrock, Dr. Gilstrap, and Board members. Tonight, we're going to provide you a summary of three special programs in the district. First, Tanya Castillo, our coordinator of special programs, will present an overview of our Bilingual Gifted and Talented Program and our Bilingual Education Program. And then Ms. Selena Bonavato Galván, our CTE coordinator, will provide an overview of this year's CTE program. And we'll begin with Ms. Castillo.
Yeah, I think I've got it. I'm hoping I don't have to turn around too much. Good evening, President Shadrock, and Board members, and Dr. Gilstrap. It's a pleasure being here today. So I'm going to review our Gifted and Talented and Bilingual Education Program. Throughout the presentation, you'll see some photos from our GT showcases from elementary campuses and the middle school, and also some different bilingual events across the Looking at our Gifted and Talented Program for the 2425 school year, Florisville ISD provided Gifted and Talented services to 317 identified students, which represents 7.8% of our student population. TEA recommends that the district has between 4% to 7% of our population identified, which we are well above. Looking at our demographics for the GT population, one area we've been working on is the demographic population of our identified Gifted and Talented students and our Hispanic population. A review of our Gifted and Talented Program demographics indicates that the program needs to improve participation of our Hispanic student population. According to TEA's State Plan for Education and Gifted Talented Students, programs should mirror the demographic of the school district by 80%. So currently, we have 173 Hispanic students, we have 157. Our goal is to ensure we have equitable access for all students in our GT program, so we're meeting or exceeding in almost all areas. Our process for identification as GT begins with every kindergarten student being screened. This is a critical component of any GT program to have a universal screening. Students who score in the top 20% of a peer group are automatically referred for testing. Parent approval is required for testing. This chart shows the breakdown of the number of kindergarten students who were screened, tested, and identified. This year, we identified 11 kindergarten students for GT services compared to the 13 students last year. We are looking into screening an additional grade level to see if we're missing some of those kiddos. We also have the opportunity for any student in grades 1 through 12 to be referred for GT testing. Referrals may be made by teachers, counselors, administrators, parents, the students themselves, or other community members. This year, 128 students were referred for testing, with 23 being identified to receive GT services next year. This is compared to the 76 students tested last year, with 26 being identified for services. Our goal going into the 2526 school year is to consider a curriculum for our GT pull-out program, consider universal screening in another grade level, and increase the number of teachers that are GT-trained across the district. And moving on to our bilingual program. The Florisville ISD bilingual program at the elementary includes dual language, which is taught half in English and half in Spanish, and our English as a Second Language service, which provides support for English language learners. At our secondary campuses, we provide ESL supports as well. These are our current program numbers across the district. We currently have 135 emergent bilinguals in our dual-language program at pre-K to fifth grade, as well as 48 English proficient students. These are students who are learning Spanish through our dual-language program, and 55 students receiving English as a Second Language support. At the secondary, we just have the ESL with 85 students at high school and 69 students at middle school. You will notice the coding of an alternative ESL with 14 students at the high school. This coding is required because we have an ESL waiver at the high school, which is due to some of our high school teachers not having the appropriate certification with their ESL certification. We also have parent denials, which are students whose parents have opted out of services for their students. Here's a look at our bilingual ESL enrollment by grade level. You will notice that we no longer have English proficient students in pre-K or kender, because we've changed to a one-way model where we're just doing instead of two-way. We also, in ESL, we have content-based and pull-out instruction. Content-based is where all of their core content teachers, math, reading, science, and social studies are ESL certified, and pull-out is where just their reading teacher is ESL certified. So our emergent bilingual students do generate specific funding both in Title III and the bilingual ESL allotment. Please note that parent denials do not generate funding. Title III or federal funds and bilingual ESL allotment are state funds, both of which are used to enhance instruction and help English learners and immigrant students attain English proficiency and develop high levels of academic achievement in English. This year, we saw a decrease in the number of identified emergent bilingual students for 2425. We had 373 total EVs identified compared to 384 the previous year, so it's a decrease of about 11 students. So we were at 9.5% last year, and now we're at about 9%. Some of our highlights from this year, we had 12 of our students that were in the bilingual dual-language program earn their Spanish one high school credit as fifth graders and sixth graders, so congratulations to them. We had three students participate in the Region 20 spelling bee. We have Region 20 come in and provide support to our high school teachers who are currently on an ESL waiver to provide content-based language instruction in the classroom and review for their ESL exam. Of those five teachers, two of them did pass their ESL exam, so they are now certified with their ESL. Eight middle school students are going to participate in Close Up Austin. This is an academy, it's going to be later in June. It's an academy designed to bring the democratic process alive for students by providing hands-on opportunities to examine the history and government of the state of Texas. And then finally, we have 31 students who may be eligible to reclassify as English proficient once we receive TLPASS and STAR scores. I will now hand it over to our CTE coordinator, Ms. Selena.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How do y'all track those high school credits?
For to get Spanish one?
They're earning it as fifth graders, you said? So how do we know that they get that in high school? How is that tracked and credited to them?
So, once we complete testing and the kids test proficient in English and Spanish, we submit it to Ms. Orth, and she documents on their transcript.
They have a high school transcript?
Yeah. They create the high-
That's already generated for them?
So it'll just move with them wherever they go.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good evening, President Shadrock, Dr. Gilstrap, members of the Board. I'll be giving an overview of our CTE, our Career and Technical Educational Programs for the district. So as far as the district goes, right now, we offer nine career clusters. The state of Texas TEA recognizes 14 different clusters, of those we offer nine. A career cluster is going to be a broad category of related industries. Now, within each career cluster, there are programs of study. Currently, we offer 12 here in the district. A program of study is going to be a set sequence of courses that provide a more in-depth look into specific careers or professions for our students, taking a little bit more information. And as you can see, the career clusters are highlighted in blue, the programs of study are highlighted in white. Now, we get into the enrollment for our career clusters, all nine of them are showcased in this graph. As we look at the enrollment numbers, looking from this particular year as well as looking into course requests, we do want to highlight a couple of different sections, specifically some different areas that we've actually polled students over the years about their areas of interest, careers in which they want to actually go into, some of which include our health science pathways, including that includes our exercise wellness and restoration courses, as well as our business marketing and finance, it's one of our newest ones, that we've actually opened up the entire program too, as well as information acknowledging. We have seen consistency in terms of intros for students in those areas as well. Now, we move into talking a little bit more about our industry-based certifications and our college career military readiness data. The first section, as you can see, discusses IVCs. Overall, we had about a passing percentage this year of about 50%. Moving into talking about our CCMR data, that would again be our college career military readiness section. We do actually have a projected percentage rate of 83% this year, so it's actually an increase of about 7% from last year, as far as how many students met that particular CCMR requirement. CCMR is an element of accountability for the district, so we are looking at how many students are meeting those, and so we have seen that increase. Next to that, you also see how many students earned that particular CCMR point by IVC, meaning that students earned their industry-based certification and they were able to earn that CCMR point, and that's been an increase of about 9% currently. We are looking actually at an important area here as far as this being a lagging accountability, however, so that projected 83% is a lagging accountability, meaning that we won't see that in this year's accountability rating, we will see that in next year's accountability rating. So this year, we will see the 76% from last year. This is a breakdown of some of these specific IVCs that were administered this year. So for the 2024-2025 school year, we did have 24 total IVCs that were administered. Of those 24, we had the sections that are highlighted in purple, those five exams were actually new ones, so that means that they have not been offered before, they were new IVCs that we presented to our students this year. Just to break down some of the color coding areas, so the sections in pink that we have, those are some areas of opportunity as far as improving some of our IVC passing rates, as you can see. The other sections that we have in green, those are all sections that have either maintained or increased in terms of their passing percentage rates. And again, we have in blue the section that identifies that 50% passing rate as well. Now, we move on to talking a little bit about our CTSO sections. So CTSOs are going to be our Career and Technical Student Organizations. These are going to be different types of ways in which students can compete within their specific career clusters. CTSOs provide opportunities for students not only to interact with their local areas and local students that are interested in their particular careers or professions, but also beyond, as far as thinking about other individuals throughout the state or throughout the nation. So what we currently have as far as active chapters for this year, the active chapters included FFA, our Future Farmers of America, also included HOSA, Skills USA. We had a lot of different types of areas on that particular front as far as different ways in which they competed in different chapters. However, we are looking into the future as far as what we can do to expand those particular CTSOs. We want to ensure that every single pathway, every single cluster, has a specific CTSO to allow students to interact with their particular profession a little more successfully, and also, we want to provide that ability for them to compete. So we do want to look at increasing a couple of different new ones that TEA has introduced just this year. So for example, our Future Coaches of Texas Association, that could be something that we put into place for our health science as far as exercise wellness and restoration goes, for all of our students that want to be future coaches in the district. These are some highlights from some of our CTSOs as well. Some of our CTSOs, some of our chapters, many of them did very well overall, they attended various state championships and various state competitions. We do want to highlight our TAPi chapter, as they are again returning to nationals this year, they'll be competing late in June, and they also placed first in state as well in a different area of competition. We also want to highlight our HOSA chapter, as this was the first year that they actually competed as a chapter, and they reached the state level. So we're very happy and very proud of our students for their accomplishments in those areas, and our sponsors as well. Some of our goals looking into the 2025-2026 school year include improving our IVC passing rates, we definitely want to make sure that students have access to resources, teachers have access to those resources as well, to ensure that we are continuing to see the improvement on those. We also want to look into how we can strengthen, continue to strengthen our networks as far as our community involvement, our partnerships that we have within our community. We have seen a lot of interest as far as working with our school district, and we want to provide students with opportunities as well to work and interact with our community as well. And we also want to look into different ways in which we can integrate instruction. What that means is to look at different ways in which we can be intercollaborative with our different types of areas as far as, for example, having our agriculture courses work in collaboration with our culinary courses for a farm-to-table kind of environment. So we definitely want to see more of that interaction between all our different areas and departments within the CT programs. We also want to look into expanding some of our CT courses at the middle school level. This year will actually be the first year where we have several different principals' classes offered at the middle school level, such as our Principles of Health Science, and we're looking forward to seeing all the different results and all the different endeavors that the students go into. And lastly, we also, as I mentioned before, we also want to continue to include some of those different CTSO chapters across the board for our career clusters, just to ensure that, again, students have the ability to compete, have the ability to interact with individuals throughout the state and throughout the nation in their particular areas of profession.
On the BPA, is this set up to what we used to have?
Yes. Yes, it is.
And how long has it not been available?
It hasn't been available these about two, three years or so, I'd believe. We were looking at starting it up, actually, again, this year. We weren't actually able to continue getting it off the ground, there was interest in it, we just weren't able to do so with the current student interest that we had, but we are looking at moving it into an active chapter, moving into next year.
How many attempts do they get for the IVC?
So it depends on the actual IVC. Some IVCs, they allow them to have multiple attempts at retesting. For some of them, they have to wait 30 days, they're limited as far as how often they can actually test, especially given that some of them have semester-long courses. So sometimes they were given two chances, sometimes they were given three or four chances to test. For the welding one, for example, they're given multiple times to actually get that particular IVC, they span it over about a week or two, the instructors do, and then they provide them with opportunities to continue to showcase their welding abilities before they are actually able to clear them for the test that they have passed it or earned that certification. So it depends on the IVC.
So have y'all seen an increase in those passing rates?
Yes.
Based on those second and third multiple attempts?
Overall, yes. Overall, we have seen an increase in those. So for example, with our health science, when we came to the CMAs, that's Certified Medical Assistant, that they typically work towards, that particular one, they gave them multiple times, but they were able to get more- multiple times, but they were able to get more practice. They gave them a lot more different types of areas to practice online, as well as with paper tests, talk with the instructor about different questions they might have. And so they were able to actually get, except for, I think, one student, everyone else passed. So it just, it depends on that particular one, but we have seen increases over time.
And you mentioned trying to give more resources. That's one of the goals.
Yes.
So would you think, is it a lack of resources that were available for them?
I think for some of them it's-
This is a low rate. That's a low pressing rate.
Yes. So I think for some of them, some of the tests have changed and also some of them were trying to incorporate new exams in because some of the exams are very difficult. So some of the, for example, some of the IT exams are just challenging exams. Even the instructors would note that some of their arts and AV exams, like Adobe, Photoshop, and so forth, are difficult tests in general. So providing them with more practice and more experiences and more online trainings can really help them, I think, to understand what's going to be tested, as well as having all of the teachers also test in the exact same sections. That way, they know what the students are going to encounter as well.
I noticed on the IVCs, the attempts have gone up quite a bit this last year. Whereas the earned has dropped. So that's where we're trying to figure out, you know, what we need to get them to make sure they can earn it. I know we've talked about trying to help out and get something started at the middle school, which we got to figure out, reorganize that. But if there's anything different we need to do, like, you know, what we can actually look at, but I just noticed the numbers differ. We have more, more of that attempted this year and then less that have earned.
Yes.
So we want to try to keep that percentage up. So if there's something else we can do, what we need to work on.
I mean, we are looking at, yes, no, of course, we are looking at the different resources I mentioned.
Yeah.
But we're also looking at different IVCs as well. They offer, in some cases, depending on that particular area of study, as far as the career clusters go, they have multiple different options. We don't have to give those particular exams. So if we're seeing that students are continuing to struggle with this, or if we're seeing that we don't have access to enough practice tests to maybe make them feel confident on that test, we can always choose a different test that's also been approved by TEA and would also provide that CCMR point too. And we are exploring some of those as well.
Yeah, I'd love to get them all, you know, IBCs, all certified would be great.
Yes. That is our goal, for sure.
Yep, definitely. Okay.
Your enrollment by the career cluster that's in our packet, most of the enrollment from this year to next year is going down, except for one. To what do you think that is?
So as far as some of those different changes, so we are kind of trying to push out a six-year program versus a four-year graduation plan. So we're trying to kind of push into those different areas, so trying to align some of those different courses towards the middle school. As that happens and as those change, we're going to see a shift in numbers. At the same time, as we kind of adjust to a different type of period of day, we're going to be providing more opportunities for students. As we provide more opportunities, again, those numbers are also going to shift. And I do also want to point out, those course requests are not the final numbers that go into it. They're just, they're just the requests right now and those numbers can definitely increase.
Does a lot of it have to do with going from the five-by-five to the eight-period day?
I believe part of it, part of it may have to do with that, just because, not the entire thing, as we continue to push out those, again, those graduation plans. Part of it will have to do with that as, again, students will have fewer classes to choose from. So instead of having, you know, 10 courses, they only have eight. And so running through some scenarios, we're going to see a little bit of a drop-off when it comes to that, just because, again, the limitation on that. Students will have to make more decisions as far as where they want to choose to go. So maybe you might have a student that wants to stay in practicum, but they'll have to choose between that or band or athletics or something else. So we're probably going to see a little bit of that as well.
I would point out on that, with the five-by-five as well, students were able to be in multiple programs of study. So you may have kids double-dipping or in welding and also in auto. With eight-period day, they may pick, oh, I'm just going to stick with just auto. So that would adjust the portion list. So they could still be in the coherent sequence, still get their CCMR point, their IBC, but they would be in one sequence rather than being in multiple sequences.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, did I, can you say that the teachers need to start taking the test? I heard you say something there and it got skimmed over.
Oh, yes. We always encourage teachers to take the IBC that they're looking at, just because it helps them when it comes to graduating students.
And do you rate that and give the statistics on how they do and how often they retake the test so that they can teach to it?
We don't rate that. We look at the opportunities we can give them to take the test, at least maybe once or twice or retest if they have difficulty with it, passing it the first time. But we do usually look at that though, as far as that goes. But we don't rate them like that.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
We will now have our early college high school report by Dr. Lee.
I'm going to refer to Ms. Castillo, she's had the report and she's been following. Hello again. So I got to step into this great adventure at the beginning of the school year of early college high school, so. Good evening and good night. Is it up there? Will it go? Okay. So Florisville ISD, Early College High School, we will begin that next year, 25-26. That is our very first cohort. So I'm excited that we are doing that in partnership with St. Philip's College and the Alamo College Community District. So what is early college high school? So early college high school is an innovative program designed to enable students to start earning college credits while still in high school. So beginning with the incoming class of 2029, students will have the chance to obtain both their high school diploma and an associate's degree from St. Philip's College. Early college high schools are open enrollment institutions that provide students who are least likely to pursue higher education with the opportunity to earn a high school diploma along with either an associate's degree or a minimum of 60 credit hours toward a bachelor's degree. So first, I want to come here because we do have a dual credit program right now in early college high school, so I wanted to share with you the differences between early college high school and dual credit. The biggest difference between ECHS and dual credit is that students attending ECHS are following a specific core sequence that leads to obtaining an associate's degree at no cost to families. So if we look at early college high school, this program is completely free for students, which is a significant advantage. The district covers the cost for financial aid for swift transfer, which is House Bill 8, which was passed last year. So students, it stops, the district will pay $50 for students that are eligible for fast, so those are students that are economically disadvantaged or at risk. And then we pay $100 for non-fast students, so those are students that are non-economically disadvantaged. So students have the opportunity to earn an associate's degree while still in high school, so it's a game changer for many kiddos. Now, looking at dual credit, families are responsible for tuition. They can take up to 14 college courses, which is a bit more limited compared to ECHS. However, it's important to note that fast students do not incur any cost either. So if they're in dual credit or early college, if they are economically disadvantaged students, they do not incur a cost at all. One thing I do want to mention is that we are shifting from Coastal Bend. We currently are with Coastal Bend Community College, we're shifting to St. Philip's. We do have sophomores and juniors that are on track to graduate with associate's degrees through Coastal Bend College. So they will continue their coursework through Coastal Bend while our other dual credits will shift to St. Philip's. So the comparison highlights the difference in the cost and the opportunities for the kiddos. All right. How is ECHS funded? So Florisville ISD received a two-year TEA planning grant for $100,000 last year. This grant is instrumental in covering various essential aspects of our program. So professional development to ensure our staff is equipped with the right tools and skills, supplies that our students need to thrive in both high school and college coursework. It'll help with student tuition, ensuring that financial barriers do not hinder access to education. It'll help with staff tuition, so if we have teachers that are working on a master's degree or looking at getting a master's degree, we have money set aside to help pay for up to 18 hours towards a master's degree. And finally, funding, field trips provide invaluable rural experiences. Looking ahead into October 2025, we will be applying for an implementation grant, which will carry us for another two years. If we are approved, it'll get us through the 26, 27, 27, 28 school year. So with this funding, we can continue to support our underrepresented students to ensure they receive high-quality education. Benchmarks. So if we look at the benchmarks for early college high school, these benchmarks serve as a foundation, guiding our efforts to ensure the program is effective and impactful. School design, that's how we blend the college and high school experience. Partnerships, that's our partnership with St. Philip's College. Our target population is our focus on underrepresented groups, ensuring that we are serving first-generation, low-income, and minority students. Academic infrastructure, this includes the courses we offer and the systems in place to support our students academically. Student supports, we provide support services to help students navigate their unique challenges, ensuring they have what they need to thrive. Outcome-based measures, finally, we track progress and success through specific metrics, which we will explore further in the next part of our presentation. So looking at outcome-based measures, this is kind of where we... So we focus on access, achievement, and attainment. So access is the prioritizing enrollment for students, particularly those at risk and economically disadvantaged. Achievement, we evaluate students using metrics like their end-of-course exams, TSIA scores, and graduation rates, reflecting our commitment to student success. Attainment, those goals include helping students earn at least 15 college credits and guiding them towards core completion and essentially obtaining an associate's degree. So next is our pathway to designation. So those OBMs, those outcome-based measures, get us to our pathway of designation. So during the 23-24 school year, we submitted our planning year application and that was approved. So during the 24-25 school year, the year that we're in right now, the ECHS leadership team received technical assistance from an assigned coach to implement the six benchmarks from the ECHS blueprint. We recruited our first cohort of students and were approved for provisional designation. So moving into the 25 through 2029 school year, we'll remain in provisional status for four years, held accountable to the outcome-based measures during this time. And after those four years, TEA will determine whether we will be fully designated. So hopefully by 2029, we are a fully designated early college high school. That is our goal. So here's our first cohort of kiddos. We had 72 students apply. We accepted 60 into our first cohort, so it's a very strong start for us. It's important to recognize these numbers are pretty significant. Firstly, we have a lot of, this really shows our students' interest in moving further in our education and looking to get an associate's degree. So we're just very excited. This is a look at the coursework for their four years, so it's a crosswalk of what their schedule might look like. We're offering two pathways. We have an associate of science and an associate of arts. So depending on if they're looking for just a basic interdisciplinary study route or if they're looking to be a science major, we're offering both. So the green classes are their electives, blues are the science and math additional requirements, and the red are the core courses that they have to take. So our goals for Florisville Early College High School is to prepare students for success in their college and career. And secondly, we want our students to graduate with a clear idea of their future. And then, most importantly, we want to graduate our students with 60 transferable semester credit hours or at minimum their 42 core complete.
So how hard did you have to work to get 72 to apply? Or were they?
So we went in in January to the lunchroom to the eighth graders and they'd already kind of been talking about it. And it wasn't that hard. I was really surprised. I was like, oh, there's not going to be that many. It'll be like 20 or 30. And then they started coming in and they started coming in and our outcome-based measures, so we have to be within 10% of our ecodis population on our admittance. So we had to look at the numbers of who applied. So we have to, okay, so how many can we accept if we have to hit this number for ecodis? So that's why we had to cut our numbers back to 60. Like, I initially wanted to take everybody. I was like, okay, you want to be early college and we'll give you, you know, like, give you that great opportunity. And so it was amazing the turnout.
So I know two years ago, we had our first associate's degree. Last year, we had three.
Three.
How many was it this year, Mr. Barrett?
Six.
Six this year, so we're growing in that number.
Mm-hmm.
But that 60 number represents 20% of the class, the graduating class.
That's a great achievement if we have that.
That's a huge achievement. I would, I don't know of another school that, now, obviously, there'll be some things to happen along the way, but that's a huge, huge stepping stone to start with. And the other thing is, how is that affecting our CTE course request? Because those kids are going to be on this track to taking more dual credit. Are they still going to have, and for CCMR purposes, it's college or career readiness? So they'll still get that CCMR point, but how's that going to affect our CTE numbers?
I think in the long run, there's going to be some opportunity for kiddos to still follow some of those pathways. They'll just have to be explicit about where they go. And there might be a choice between band or CTE pathway, I think, is where we're really going to run into it. I know we're trying our best with scheduling to keep athletics open for kiddos that want to participate in sports or even working with Coach Martinez to ensure that if kids are wanting to participate in sports and it interferes with the athletic period, if there's a way that we can still ensure they're able to do those things with athletics and band.
But they wouldn't have to do, like, if they're doing this, they don't have to do CTE. This would be, this could be their academic track.
Yes. Yeah, it could be that multi-disciplinary study track.
That's exciting stuff.
I am excited. I would say the commitment to it is, is just amazing to me because they were also all required to attend a TSI boot camp this week and of the 60, 59 have showed up.
Wow.
So that is a huge commitment. And with that, we also have about 25 other kiddos participating in that boot camp. It is a huge turnout. I'm just excited, like, our kids are taking TSI and passing and getting college ready, so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Next on agenda is item number five. First is the consent agenda by Dr. Gilstrap.
Board members, typical consent agenda, nothing additional to add. This month, we, because today is only the second, we did have to send out the financials just today, so that the board packet did get updated. If there's not any questions, administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd love to accept the administration's recommendation.
My second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martinez and a second by Ms. Reed for the consent agenda. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six to zero. Thank you. Moving on, we will now consider the approval of the DAEP interlocal agreements with participating ISD for the 2025-2026 school year by Ms. Engel.
Good evening, Mr. Shadrach, Dr. Gilstrap, members of the board. This evening, we bring to you the DAEP agreement for the 25-26 school year. We've been working with three other districts, Fall City, Karn City, and Poth. Kennedy did notify us back in January that they were withdrawing from the program this year, so we are four districts now. So it's Florisville, Poth, Karn City, Fall City. The agreement sets a base fee based on the individual's contracting URL classification, so 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A have different base levels that they pay into the program. And then on top of that, each contracting district pays the fiscal agent, which is ourselves, a daily rate for each student assigned to DAEP. That rate is $40 a day, which is the same as it was this past year. So we do have in your packet, we've received Fall City, Karn City's back, we have not gotten Poth's back yet, but we do anticipate, as far as I know, Mr. Reed, yes? If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the disciplinary alternative education program interlocal agreement for Fall City and Karn City for the 25-26 school year as presented.
I'd love to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Muse and a second by Mr. Saboto. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Now, we will consider the approval of the bank depository extension with Wells Fargo, also presented by Ms. Engel.
Yes, sir. So our district depository contract with Wells Fargo ends on June 30th, 2025. Under current law, districts are required to bid out these services unless flexibility has been granted under a district of innovation plan approved by the board. Luckily, we do have that. It was approved in March of 2022, and it did state that the district would review the depository services and extend for up to two years without doing a formal bid for the duration of the DOI plan. So with this flexibility, the district would like to extend the services with the current district depository, which is Wells Fargo, for an additional two-year term, starting July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027. Any questions?
Last time was three years, now we're doing two years, is that right?
Yeah, it's been, it's two years, it's been two years for the last couple of years.
So it's every two years, I forget.
If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve a two-year extension of bank depository agreement with Wells Fargo as presented.
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Dr. Odom and a second by Mr. Muse. Any further discussions or questions about the recommendation? Show of hands, all in favor? Six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Now we will consider the approval of the contract with Inc. for the 2025-2026 Head Start program. But Dr. Lee, Dr. Lee's going to be up there, how about that?
How about that? Good evening again. The district has had a contract with Innovative Network of Knowledge, or INC, to support Head Start education for several years. The 25-26 contract that's included in your packet is identical to the contract we've had this school year to supplement the cost of six Head Start classes for qualifying three- and four-year students. The Head Start classes operate very similar to FISD classes with the same curriculum. They just have a few more requirements for their grant. Are there any questions about the contract?
Again, from what I read, it's simply, it pays half of the teacher's salary up to a certain threshold and pays all of the support, is that right?
Almost. It's $28,000 for each teacher and up to $22,000 for each parent. So it really is not quite half for the teachers. It might be close to half or all the ones for the parents, but it's, it's a blanket amount of-
What was that total amount?
Hold on, all right, I got it right here. $300,000.
And that's for what timeframe?
For next school year.
Just for one year?
25-26, it's the same amount as last year. I did ask for more money, but they are in a five-year grant, and they were told they're, they're going to get their grant, but even their own employees are not going to get a cost of living raise, so that could not increase the amount.
I know this is a federal grant program through the Department of Education. Any word from, from them at the federal level about how to change the federal level?
They anticipate that Head Start will be funded, not sure about the three-year-old, the, just not sure about which program after this next year. We'll, we'll wait and see, but this next year is, the grant is secure. Any other questions? If not, administration recommends the board approve the contract with Innovative Network of Knowledge, Inc., for the 2025-2026 Head Start program.
Mr. President, I'd love to accept the administration's recommendation.
My second.
We have a motion by Mr. Saboda and a second by Ms. Reed. Any further discussions or questions about the recommendation? Show of hands, all in favor? Six to zero.
Thank you.
Lastly, we will consider the approval of the TEA low attendance waivers by Mr. Schroeder.
Good evening, Superintendent Schools, Board President, and Board of Trustees. On January 22nd of 2025, concerns about cold weather affected student attendance at both the Early Childhood Center and Florisville Alternative Campus. Later that month, on January 27th and 28th, a flu outbreak impacted attendance at Florisville South Elementary. More recently, on May 16th, 2025, a safety and security concern affected attendance at both Florisville High School and Florisville South Elementary. Districts or campuses may request a waiver to exclude certain instructional days from ADA and FSP funding calculation if attendance on those days dropped at least 10 percentage points below the prior school year's overall average attendance for the district or specific campus. Such waivers apply when absences are due to inclement weather, health issues, or safety-related events, such as these three incidents. And I believe I've given you the table that shows the percentage average and on those days, how it was 10% or below pending that impact of weather, safety, or health. Are there any questions, board members?
Have they dropped significantly?
Yes, sir.
So the way they do the calculation, if the waiver's approved, that day will just be like we didn't have school. We'll be removed from the denominator when determining our average student attendance.
I mean, I know, you know, we can't predict, act to God, so it's, I would expect it with weather, but to see back-to-back days with illness, is that normal, is that just-
I'm not going to say normal, but it always is an issue every year. We monitor that very closely, especially with our younger ones. Donna Lynn, our district nurse, is always in my office saying, hey, it's getting close, Mr. Schroeder. Is that for-
That was a Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah.
So it- Very good.
All right, if there are no further questions, administration recommends the board approve the TEA low attendance waivers as presented.
I'd love to accept the administration's recommendation.
My second.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Saboda and a second by Dr. Odom? Any further questions about the motion? Show of hands, all in favor? Six to zero.
Hey, Mr. Saboda, we still got those yellow cards up there? I'm just saying, there's someone in here that has one more board meeting, and she made me presenting, so.
You almost got one.
Just saying. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
I would like to say something before we adjourn. I want to thank Chief Key and everybody in this room for what happened on May 15th. I've heard nothing but positive. I think something that we cannot predict or handle, but the way it was handled, I personally wanted to tell y'all thank you. That's something that Chief Key has been through training for, and his staff and everybody. But thank y'all for what y'all do. We really do appreciate y'all.
And I was involved when, I just wanted to do something humorous. I'm rare, he needs to go on a track team. I was pulling up when the Lions Club was honoring our teachers and our parents. And, I mean, I never saw, he just, he was like a flash of light. And the concern, and I walked in, you were a little paler than normal and figure out. And then, it just happened, knowing how well this is done, you know. I won't say anything about it, but anyway, we did a standout job. You know, if, if anything that, the parents are going to get all panicky. You know, they hear, and they, not hearing the correct news. I don't care where, where we have it, it's like the first one we had, I mean, it was crazy. But we do a bang-up job. And it's thanks to everyone, y'all, get your staff, you get drills, and they know what to do. And I thank all of y'all.
Thank you for your dream.
Thank you.
Yes, it's hard to control information, especially those that are dispensing information without known fact. It doesn't help the situation.
Second regret, I mean, the guy that broke us a wrist, you get someone shot, no, they weren't shot.
It's summertime, so we will conclude our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing now, the meeting is adjourned at 7:48.